...policy and political negotiations, earning him a reputation as an honest broker and a pragmatic strategist with the ability to get things done. And whereas Mr. Vlakovic has been an outstanding leader and manager of the mayor's office, shaping and mentoring a talented group of employees that work together each day to advance the needs and priorities of the city while at the same time exemplifying the best ideals of public service. And whereas during his tenure, Mr. Vlakovic's positive attitude and steadfast leadership were reflected in matters ranging from organizational design and development to advocacy and interjurisdictional partnerships and policy and program implementation. And his deep engagement in the wide array of issues spanning the breadth of the city enterprise and all its lines of business made him a key ally and a trusted advisor to leaders in all departments. And whereas Minneapolis benefited from Mr. Vlakovic's leadership and insights during major events during his tenure, ranging from the Super Bowl and the city's participation indoors open to the uprising following the murder of George Floyd, the impact of a global health pandemic, and the recovery and renewal that have been the city's focus during the past four years. And whereas Mr. Vlakovic will be deeply missed by the mayor, the mayor's office and cabinet, as well as the city administration, by the city council and by his many colleagues, compatriots, and friends from throughout the enterprise. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby commend Mr. Vlakovic for his exemplary service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis and express our deep gratitude and appreciation for your outstanding leadership and unwavering commitment to the people of the city, together with our congratulations and best wishes for much happiness and fulfillment in all your new adventures. Did you want to say a few words?
Michael Vlakovic is a person of great confidence. He's very calm and collected under pressure. And he holds himself very well with the exception of one particular moment, which is when he's being honored and recognized. And in those moments, he's embarrassed and flustered, but I got to tell you, Michael Vlakovic has been such an incredible chief of staff and an amazing leader for this city at perhaps the most critical time in history. I hired Michael in December of 2017 before I even took office. And since then, he's risen to a level where he's leading not just our incredible team, all of whom have deep respect for him, but has become a trusted partner and the person in the enterprise that so many go to for advice. Whether you agree with him or you disagree with him, whether you're oppositional or you're part of the team pushing for a particular policy, Michael has been that trusted voice because he has both the kind of integrity and compassion, but he also sees the whole board all at once. And you know, through all of the characteristics that I love about him, his skill, his intelligence, his incredible ability to manage political understanding, the characteristics that I love the most and we should all cherish the most is friendship. You've been an amazing friend. I love you dearly. I so look forward to not just the next thing that you're going to do, but all of the incredible things that you will do throughout your life that will benefit countless people. And so with that, I have already proclaimed it a Michael Vlakovic Day in the city of Minneapolis. I really appreciate the council's resolution in honoring him on a citywide basis. And Michael, we thank you for your six and a half brilliant years of service here at the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for leaning into the severe discomfort I feel with these moments. It doesn't actually make it much easier. But I have felt a lot of things over the last several weeks, specifically several days. And the predominant thing that I've been feeling is gratitude. For curious people, for people who are passionate about service, from housing to safety and reform and development, there is no better place to work than the city of Minneapolis. And so, thank you to Mayor Frye for taking a chance on me back in 2017, for your friendship, for your mentorship, and for the leadership you've come to represent for the city. Thank you to the city council for every debate, every point of collaboration, and every moment of levity between. And to my team and the cabinet, your courage, your compassion, your talent have kept me going when things got really difficult. So, thank you. I am very much looking forward to watching all of the good work that folks in this room continue to do, just from a slightly different vantage point. So, thank you.
I'll say a couple of words. I'll just say that, you know, there's what we do out here on the dais in public, and then there's what happens behind the scenes. And Michael's been a partner behind the scenes. And a shocking revelation might be that we don't always get along, right? But we still have to do work in service of our constituents and in service of the city of Minneapolis. And Michael's always been there as a partner in doing that work. So I just really want to say a note of appreciation for them.
I know that I'm not alone when I appreciate how even through difficult situations, you would bring sunshine into the office. That is something that's really unique. It's not just a skill, that's a talent, and that's something you carry with you. And it's light, and it's lighthearted, and it really helps us all out through difficult times. I think that Councilmember Jenkins had a couple of words she wanted to say, too.
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, Michael, I just wanted to just express my appreciation for your levity that you bring to really challenging situations these last six and a half years have been extremely challenging for the city of Minneapolis. And you have been a steadfast partner, along with the mayor, in trying to overcome those challenges. So, thank you for your service to the city, and best to you and your future endeavors.
Where is Lyle? There he is. Do you see him? I don't. Hi, Lyle. Our first couple here are recognizing people for their service to the city and for amazing public service. So, we have with us Lyle Hodges. He's been our comptroller, not comptroller, comptroller. This, I'll just start with the resolution and then we can have some comments from people. This resolution honors Lyle for his service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. Whereas Lyle Hodges commenced employment with the city on August 8th of 2011. Initially serving as an accountant, over time, he advanced through various roles, ultimately reaching the position of comptroller within Finance and Property Services. Whereas Mr. Hodges was appointed deputy comptroller in 2017 and comptroller in 2018. Whereas Mr. Hodges, over the past 12 years, has played a key role in implementing numerous important initiatives, including those from Governmental Accounting Standards Board, such as leases, subscription-based information and technology arrangements, and pension accounting. Mr. Hodges has helped the city maintain its Government Finance Officers Association Award, which the city has received for the past 49 consecutive years. Whereas in 2014, Mr. Hodges was responsible for compiling the annual comprehensive financial report for the first time. In 2015, Mr. Hodges initiated the Finance and Property Services ACFR cover photo contest, allowing employees to submit their photographs to be featured as cover art on our ACFR. This contest ran for the 2014, 2015, and 2016 reports. Since 2015, he's been primarily or secondarily responsible for each one issued by the city. Whereas Mr. Hodges successfully helped the enterprise transition to remote work during COVID, including creating guidance on allowable expenditure for home office and other hybrid work needs. Whereas Mr. Hodges has been diligent in overseeing city spending to minimize waste and prevent the misuse of public funds. He is unafraid to tackle challenging tasks. And whereas Mr. Hodges has a calm and approachable demeanor, making him easy to talk to, he is highly respected by his staff and throughout the enterprise, and his opinion is greatly valued. And whereas Mr. Hodges will be deeply missed by Finance and Property Services, the city's elected officials, department heads, and additional city staff as a leader, colleague, and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby congratulate you for your years of service and commitment to the city and present this honorary resolution together with our most sincere thanks and appreciation. And we wish you much happiness and fulfillment in your future endeavors. Thank you. I will, I'll let Director Duchani Dai say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember Pomisano. Lyle, you know, it's been a privilege to work with you for the last almost four years. You know, 12 years is a long time in Finance and Property Services, given that most of management is, you know, less than five years into the role in finance. So you've been the historical knowledge person, you know? Anytime we have a question about why do we do this, you're always there to give us the answer. So I will really appreciate, miss you and appreciated everything you've done for finance.
Lyle, excuse me. I just want to take this opportunity to sincerely, sincerely thank you for all the work that you have done, your calm demeanor, and your expertise. And I would surely miss you, so please keep in touch.
Thank you. And on behalf of the city, Mr. Hodges, we don't have an opportunity to see you a lot at city council, and that's maybe a good thing. We know that you're buried in the work. And we ask you a lot of questions when you do come to present, you know, right off the cuff, and I don't think that's very easy or typical for somebody with the kind of depth of finance background that you have to necessarily be able to do. And you've always done so with thoughtfulness and grace. And we're grateful for how carefully you've cared for our city and helped us through some very difficult times. Is there anything else anybody wanted to share? Great. Well, we'll take a picture here and send you off. Did you want to say anything?
Sure. Go ahead. Yeah. Well, I just want to say thank you. I thank my colleagues over here this week, you know, talking a lot about historical knowledge, and it's that knowledge within the finance department that everyone shares that really makes finance possible. It's a shared knowledge. And thank you to the council and the mayor and for sitting through my presentations. I know public displays of accounting aren't exactly the most riveting topics that you deal with, but hopefully I've been transparent and informative. So, thank you all.
Next, I will invite up Councilmember Vitah to recognize Stella Whitney West.
Well, good morning. This is such an honor and a pleasure. Come on over. Don't be scared. My North Point peeps got here first. They were here at like 8:45 this morning. Thank you. Here, somebody's got to hold, Dr. Brooks, you want to hold it for us, or the mayor, while I read it? So this resolution is in honor of Stella Whitney West on her retirement. Ms. Stella Whitney West is retiring in June 2024. And whereas Ms. Stella Whitney West has been with North Point for 20 years and has served as CEO for 17 of those years. And whereas she has been a lifelong champion in making sure we achieve more equitable health outcomes for all. And whereas during her tenure at North Point, has involved and expanded their impact under her leadership from becoming a certified healthcare home, providing interpreter services, transitioning an electronic health record system, making the property smoke-free before any other Hennepin County property, we did that together. And implementing a community-wide COVID testing and vaccine operation. And whereas the most important and impactful was the historical $100 million campus expansion project, doubling the size of North Point's main campus facility, as well as the several satellite clinic locations throughout North Minneapolis. And whereas with those historical changes, North Point is now able to serve over 30,000 residents of North Minneapolis, providing a wide range of health and human services. And whereas her extensive experience in governance and policy has been honored with several leadership and fellowship awards, including a Bush Leadership Fellowship, the International Black Women's Congress Community Service Award, Women's Health Leadership Trust Honoree, and the 2021 Minneapolis-St. Paul Business Journal Women in Business Award. And whereas "We're Making Health Happen" has been a favorite phrase of Stella's over the years, her legacy includes all the health we have made happen and will make happen in North Minneapolis. And whereas Stella has demonstrated time and time again, a great leader shows us what it means to honor our history and create our future. And whereas a lifelong member of the community, Ms. Whitney West has surely made a long-lasting impact at North Point and the community, creating standards for health and wellness across Hennepin County and the entire state of Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and the city council do hereby congratulate Stella Whitney West on her illustrious career and much-deserved retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Vitah. I am truly honored and blessed. I want to thank my family, my daughter is here, my North Point family. This has been a labor of love. It doesn't even feel like work. I started off in the private sector. I actually started off doing research for the Pillsbury Company and the University of Minnesota, and then made the switch to public service. And that is where I found my passion, that is where I continue, and I am so honored. Thank you, councilmembers, Mayor Frye. I'm truly, I'm usually on the other side, so, but I am so grateful to be able to work in this community, and more importantly, to be a part of North Point Health and Wellness Center, where we have had strong partnerships with the city of Minneapolis. And I could tell stories for days about our impact around HIV/AIDS, and then also now with COVID. But I know we're on a time limit. But thank you, and I'm truly honored and grateful.
And I'll just say quickly, Ms. Stella was my boss for 17 years at North Point. When I started at North Point, she was the COO. We were housed in the North Point Inc. building together, and then she moved on up to CEO. And it was absolutely wonderful to be mentored by you, Ms. Stella, to grace you in the hallways of North Point and always get positive feedback from you about the work that I was doing. So thank you so much for always believing in me and people who look like me and who come from where I come from, and always seeing the vision of North Minneapolis and health. North Point used to be called Pilot City, and you took that to a different level. You were an advocate for the name change and making sure that people had a safe space for all their needs at North Point. So thank you. And thank you to everyone else that's here in support of Ms. Stella. We have Dr. Gilliam, we have Dr. Thomas, Dr. Brooks, and staff here, her daughter, staff here from North Point, Dr. Rashana, sorry, Dr. Rashana. We have everyone here from North Point who's supporting. And also, Mayor, I know you may want to say something, and Councilmember Jenkins also.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, first, thank you for giving us and mentoring the incredible councilmember, Latricia Vitah. And North Point, as you all know, is a mainstay in our community. Every single time we have something that we want to get done to partner specifically for the North Side, but also more broadly, on anything from COVID-19 to the broad public health circumstances, to, you mentioned, AIDS prevention. You look to North Point, we look to North Point for that trusted partner. And it's not a coincidence that the great work at North Point is happening, and you've been the leader of it for the last 17 years. None of that is coincidental, it's because you are such an incredible leader, and we are so proud to work with you. And you've built something up at North Point that will continue on for generations. And so I'm not going to read the whole proclamation here, because so much of the content was included in the resolution that Councilmember Vitah just read. But what I will say is that, I'll read a couple at the beginning and a couple at the end. Whereas Stella Whitney West has been a celebrated leader of North Point Health and Wellness Center for two decades, joining the organizations as the COO in 2004 and transitioning to the role of CEO in 2007. And whereas there are countless programs, initiatives, and accomplishments that you've achieved over those years that have quite simply helped people in Minneapolis live brilliant lives. And whereas the city of Minneapolis expresses deep gratitude to Stella Whitney West for her career in bettering health and wellness of countless Minneapolis and Hennepin County residents and guests, and recognizes her unique role in positively contributing to the livelihood of our community. Now therefore, I, Jacob Frye, mayor of the city of Minneapolis, do hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2024 as Stella Whitney West Day in the city of Minneapolis. Congratulations.
Stella, I just want to say congratulations on an amazing career, and thank you for helping to make health happen in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you so much.
Next, I'll welcome up Councilmember Osman to recognize Norway House.
I'm here to honor a special place in my word, Word 6, City of Minneapolis and the State of Minnesota. Honoring Norway House. Whereas Norway House has been an integral part of our community, located in the Ventura Village neighborhood, which has fostered connection between the United States and the Norway through arts, business, and culture. And whereas Norway House has achieved significant milestones, including dedication and opening of its first building and the integration of the New Norway House Innovation and Culture Center in 2022, which serves over 45,000 guests annually. And whereas Norway House has proudly hosted Her Majesty Queen Sanja of Norway at its grand opening in October 2022, fathering solidifying and it's important, important as a culture hub. And whereas Minnesota has rich Norwegian heritage with over 865,000 residents claiming Norwegian ancestry, compromising 16% of the state's population, dating back to the arrival of the first Norwegian immigrant in 1825. And whereas Norway House has continued to strengthen the bonds between Norwegian-American and the broader community throughout its diversity offering, such as its cafe, gallery, and event and programs. And whereas Norway House has actively contributed to our community throughout various achievements, including hosting a local street fairs, participating in community safety meetings, and cooperating with councilmembers and public officials to provide gathering space for the community and its members. And whereas Norway House has grown into a forward-thinking nonprofit organization, serving as a contemporary venue for all aspects of Nordic business and life in Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby honor and celebrate Norway House for their commitment, dedication to the residents of the city of Minneapolis and surrounding community. And now we have guests that will say, from Norway House, that will make some remarks.
Thank you so much to Councilmember Osman.
Next, I'll welcome up Councilmember Osman to recognize Norway House.
Good morning. I'm here to honor a special place in my ward, Ward 6, city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota. Honoring Norway House. Whereas Norway House has been an integral part of our community located in the Ventura Village neighborhood, which has fostered connection between the United States and the Norway through arts, business, and culture. And whereas Norway House has achieved significant milestones, including dedication and opening of its, its first building and the integration of the new Norway House Innovation and Culture Center in 2022, which serves over 45,000 guests annually. And whereas Norway House has proudly hosted Her Majesty Queen Sanja of Norway at its grand opening in October 2022, fathering solidifying and it's important, important as a culture hub. And whereas Minnesota has rich Norwegian heritage with over 865,000 residents claiming Norwegian ancestry, compromising 16% of the state's population dating back to the arrival of the first Norwegian immigrant in 1825. And whereas Norway House has continued to strengthen the bonds between Norwegian-American and the broader community throughout its diversity offering, such as its cafe, gallery, and events and programs. And whereas Norway House has actively contributed to our community throughout various achievements, including hosting a local street fairs, participating in community safety meetings, and cooperating with council members and public officials to provide gathering space for the community and its members. And whereas Norway House has grown into a forward-thinking nonprofit organization serving as a contemporary venue for all aspects of Nordic business and life in Minneapolis. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council do hereby honor and celebrate Norway House for their commitment, dedication to the residents of its city of Minneapolis and surrounding community. And now, we have guests that will say, from Norway House, that will make some remarks.
Thank you so much to Councilmember Osman and your entire staff. The city of Minneapolis has been wonderful to work with you and collaborating with our partners in the Ventura Village. Here with Ethan Bieland, one of my colleagues, on behalf of the Board of Directors of Norway House, please come and visit us at Norway House. We are open every day and serving anybody from the community and anybody that wants to come and visit. We have tons of classes and events. If you like to make Lufse, we do have those as well, so come on down. But thank you. This is a wonderful honor, and we're so grateful to you and your partnership and everything. So, thank you so much. Tusentak, as we say in Norwegian.
Well, thank you so much. Norway House is a special place in our community. It's beautiful. You should visit. We hosted, they hosted the, the Queen of Norway that came to our city last year, I believe, last year. So, please, if you got the time, go visit. It's a wonderful place for our community. And thank you so much for staying in Ventura Village and continuing to serve the residents of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Next, I will welcome up Councilmember Jenkins to recognize the Urban Spectrum Theater Company.
There we go. Good morning, everyone. And it is my honor to present this resolution honoring and recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Urban Spectrum Theater Company in the city of Minneapolis.
Can we make noise?
Make some noise.
Come on, make some noise.
All right. So, whereas in 1974, a group of South Minneapolis neighborhood residents formed a community theater to work in conjunction with the City of Minneapolis Police and Community Activities Project, a program set up to engage Minneapolis police with, more with neighborhood residents. And whereas the company was originally named The Real Community Theater, but evolved to become the Urban Spectrum Theater Company. And whereas the theater's mission is to provide quality, accessible, multicultural productions for the inner city and to offer an opportunity for neighborhood residents, especially young people, to work with more experienced performers. And whereas the group began with children's shows in city parks and taking programs to nursing homes, churches, community centers. And whereas over the years, they have worked in partnership with Pillsbury House, the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, City Inc., Subanthony Community Center, and area musicians and dancers. And whereas they were first, I'm sorry, they were the first company to offer a policy of admission by donation, thus remaining accessible for all. And whereas with the passing years, the company's productions developed into entertainment, education, and world premiere shows that presented the stories of entertainers and artists of color in history. Several world premieres were staged celebrating persons of Josephine Baker, Bessie Smith, Big Mama Thornton, Eartha Kitt, Foxy Brown, Catherine Dunham, and many others. Children's shows were folk's tales from all around the world presented at the holiday season. And whereas in 2012, the company presented an original stage play written by Judy Cooper-Lyle of the movie Honey Dripper, written and directed by John Sales. Mr. Sales gave his personal permission for the show to be presented and met the producer while in Minneapolis. This show was set in South, in the South in the 1950s and covered a period where many African-Americans were arrested on false charges and made to work off their fine in the fields owned by judges and other political figures. And whereas in 2019, the theater won the coveted TSCA Award in theater for its world premiere show, Warm Dark Dusk, a jazz production surrounding the poetry of Langston Hughes and the first production of his kind in the United States. And whereas over the past year, the company has staged four shows celebrating women of color in dance from the 1920s to the present. Vocalists from the metropolitan area who have taken inspiration from well-known artists of color, and a show celebrating the musicians of our metropolitan area. And whereas the fourth show on May 22 brought back performers from the theater's company's past, recreating their former roles in various shows. And May 22 was a celebration of the company's 50th year of production in South Minneapolis. And whereas the company plans to continue its educational entertainment history, maintain its mission statement, and bring shows to the inner city. And whereas the founder, Judy Cooper-Lyle, will remain involved as the executive producer, and Penny Masuku, I hope I didn't butcher that too bad. Masuku. Thank you, as the new artistic director, as the Urban Spectrum Theater Company enters its 51st season. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby honor the 50th anniversary of the Urban Spectrum Theater during May 2024, and urge our communities to continue supporting the arts, arts education, and the Urban Spectrum Theater to ensure that these imperative stories continue to be told. Please join me in recognizing and honoring the Urban Spectrum Theater Company.
Yes.
And, I don't know, Mary, would you like to share a few words, or Judy, or?
Judy, you want to go first?
I just want to thank the city council for this honor. It's been, I can't believe it's been 50 years. When I started, my daughter over here in the green was 18 months old, and here we are now. It's, it's been an honor to work in inner-city Minneapolis, where I have lived since 1969, and to work with all the wonderful people that I've had the honor to work with and bring these shows to the inner city. And we fully intend to do that in continuance under the direction of Penny Masuku.
I just want to say, I am saying, I'm proud. I've been a, I did my first show in 2003, and I'll keep on going and keep on, I turned 70 last year, I'm gonna keep on going, right? Yes, yes.
Judy Cooper-Lyle is my mother. My name is Melinda Moravari, and I just want to say I'm beyond proud of you, Mom. And Christopher is here, and he's proud of you, too.
Yes, I'm Penny Masuku, artistic director. This is amazing. I never thought we'd be here. I'm just so grateful to be in the presence of you, all of you standing up here. You've been so detrimental in my growth and just the growth in this company and what I do. So, thank you to the city council, and Judy, thank you for everything.
Hi, John. Today, I grew up here, and I started out with Judy in, in the 90s, and we did children's shows. But what impresses me most about the theater is it welcomes everybody, African-American, Latino, Asian, white, straight, gay, transgender, everyone has done, has participated in the shows, and they're so absolutely amazing. The people involved are, they keep coming back, because we all love each other, we've established a community together. I now live in California, and the commitment of the theater is so wonderful that I, I still, I do the graphics remotely, and I come back, and I, this time I took photos, and it's just been so wonderful. And Penny, I'm so excited for you. You are so, you are so beautiful, and all these, these, these people here are so talented. You guys must come see a show. So, I know you're on your phones, but like, you know, hey, I'm gonna call you all. This is, this theater is awesome, you guys. You know, we, you gotta come, you know? So, thank you very much.
I just want to say one more thing. I lost my, my son a year and a half ago, and he, John mentored him when he was very young, and Christopher Lyle did our graphics and our photography for a long time, and I know he's here with us now. But thank you again.
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, I will welcome up councilmembers Koski and Paul Masano to recognize ALS Awareness Month.
Welcome, everybody. We have, oop, not that one. We have one last resolution, and we have Sarah Sanchez from the ALS Foundation. And this resolution recognizes May 2024 as ALS Amotrophic Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis. So, perhaps I'll read the resolution and ask you to say just a few words about it? Thank you. Whereas ALS is a progressive neurodegenerative disease that affects nerve cells in the brain and spinal cord, causing a person's brain to lose connection with the muscles, slowly taking away a person's ability to walk, talk, eat, and eventually breathe. And whereas the disease was identified in 1869 by French neurologist John Martin Charcot and became more widely known internationally on June 2, 1941, when it ended the career of one of baseball's most beloved players, Lou Gehrig. Thereafter, ALS was commonly known as Lou Gehrig's Disease. Whereas ALS diagnoses can take months or years. Someone is diagnosed with ALS every 90 minutes, and 5,000-plus people are diagnosed every year. At any given time, more than 600 Minnesotans are living with ALS. And whereas a person's life changes forever after an ALS diagnosis, and learning to accept and live with the disease can be incredibly difficult. Persons with ALS have decisions to make, symptoms to manage, treatment options to evaluate, and adjustments to almost every detail of their daily routine. Whereas the average life expectancy of ALS patients is two to five years from the time of their diagnosis, and every 90 minutes, someone passes away from ALS. Whereas about 90% of ALS cases occur without any known family member history or genetic cause, and the remaining 10% are inherited through a mutated gene with a known connection to the disease. Whereas the estimated annual out-of-pocket cost to care for persons with ALS is $250,000. Whereas there is no cure, but there is hope. And whereas a wealth of new scientific understanding about the physiology of ALS has occurred in recent years. Studies to develop more treatments and a cure for ALS are ongoing around the world. Scientists have made significant progress in understanding how the disease works, identify biological indicators that can help diagnose and treat the disease, and learning ways to prevent cases of ALS. Whereas the estimated cost to develop a drug to slow or stop ALS progression is $2 billion. Whereas through advocacy, we can raise awareness about the challenges faced by people with ALS, advance policies that improve the lives of people with ALS, expand the network of support for those suffering, and advocate for investments in research to discover a cure. Whereas in the summer of 2014, three young men living with ALS, Anthony Sinarcha, Pete Froetz, and Pat Quinn, took the Ice Bucket Challenge and launched a global phenomenon that changed the fight against ALS forever. They inspired over 17 million people around the world to participate in the challenge and donate to the cause, raising $115 million in funds for ALS research and care. And this year, on the 10th anniversary of the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge, we honor their legacy. And whereas the city is home to the ALS Center of Excellence at Hennepin Healthcare, the University of Minnesota Health Fairview Clinic, the Minneapolis VA Healthcare System, and ALS physicians, all of whom are dedicated to making sure with, that people with ALS have access to the best specialized care. Whereas the ALS Association sponsors a Minneapolis-St. Paul Metro Area Support Group to offer people with ALS and their loved ones a place to receive support and education. Whereas each May, the ALS community comes together to raise awareness of the disease, share stories from people living with ALS, show support for caregivers, families, and care workers, and shine a spotlight on those who dedicate their lives to finding a cure. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby recognize the month of May as ALS Awareness Month and encourage the public to raise awareness and show support for the cause. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for what you do. If you wanted to say a few words?
Thank you so much to Councilmember Mayor Fry and the council members. ALS is a rare disease, but it just doesn't feel rare to the people that are facing it every day, and their families, and their community, and their network, and the people that have passed and will be diagnosed. So, awareness is key to hopefully finding that cure other than research investment. So, we really appreciate this. Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you to several Ward 11 residents who reached out, and as we have said this many times here, really making sure that we are increasing our awareness around ALS. And I'm proud to be able to work with Councilmember Pam Masano and bring this resolution forward today. So, thank you.
Thank you. If you want to just stand in between us, and you can hold the resolution, and we'll take a quick picture.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to Michael and Lyle for your hard work for the city of Minneapolis. And with that, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for May 23 to order. The clerk will call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Koski.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Koski.
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vitak.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have, I would like to move an amendment to, under new business, to speak to a business district block event for the Timberwolves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Koski is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That amendment carries and we have the agenda, the underlying agenda for today's meeting before us as amended. Are there any other amendments? May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison. Our, Councilmember Koski is absent. Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted as amended. Next, the acceptance of our May 9th meeting minutes. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those matters have been referred to in the next cycle. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those reports are taken up in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its chair, councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. The Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee is bringing forward 14 items for approval. The first is a passage of resolution for a gift acceptance from the Minnesota Section of the American Waterworks Association for Travel and Lodging. Number two is a passage of resolution for a revised form contract for the Memorandum of Agreement for HUD, Environmental Coordination and Review Amongst State and Local Partners. Three is a staff directive for Shot Spotter Evaluation. Four is a staff directive for Information Governance Policy Recommendations. Number five is authorizing contract with Shore Elliott Hendrickson, Inc. for Design Services for the Logan Park Industrial Reconstruction Project. Six is authorizing contract with SRF Consulting Group, Inc. for the Climate Legacy Initiative Implementation Group. Seven is authorizing contract amendment with Alliance Mechanical Services to complete condenser replacement in the Hoff parking ramp. Eight is authorizing contract amendment with Meyer Contracting, Inc. for the Hennepin Ave South Street Reconstruction Project. Nine is approving legal settlement with Maovu Tao v. City of Minneapolis. Ten is approving legal settlement for Sayyed Abdallah v. Sergio Velez et al. Eleven is approving legal settlement claimed by Christine against the City of Minneapolis John Doe officers. Twelve is a passage of resolution related to legal settlement of special assessment appeal for the Hiawatha Metal Craft. Thirteen is authorizing agreement extension related to a grant with the Polab Family Foundation for Alternative Mental Health Response in the Police Early Intervention System. And four is approving contracts with various vendors for the 2024 Violence Prevention Services. And with that, I'll move all items for approval and stand for any questions.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne, and thank you, Chair Wonsley. As everyone knows, I take Climate Legacy Initiative Implementation very seriously, climate action very seriously, and I wanted to know more about the SRF contract that was being passed this cycle for $500,000 over the course of five years. And really grateful for Deputy Commissioner Hanlon for answering questions for me this week and also to the Health Department Administrative Team for uploading the original RFP so we have full transparency over this contract and that the community can follow along with this great work. So I'm really excited to work with the consultants that are being hired to support us in our Climate Legacy Initiative Implementation and wanted to give you that update today.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to speak briefly to item 13, the Polab Family Foundation, who has donated money for an early intervention system for our police department to help with their mental health, help with the need to monitor for the safety of our citizens. And it's great that a private foundation like that steps up to help us protect ourselves. I'm grateful.
And I put myself in queue because I wanted to highlight item number five, Logan Park Industrial. I'm really excited about this project. This is the Quincy Street area and we just celebrated Art World last weekend and it's always amazing to see so many people out in the streets. And now that the state legislature has given us the authority to create pedestrian plazas, I think that would be an amazing area to target for that type of street design. And this major reconstruction has been a long time in the making and I really hope there's an opportunity to get one of these people-centered streets in our city. And seeing no further questions or discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next is a report from our Budget Committee, presented by Vice President Shugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee is bringing forward three items for approval. Item number one is the appointed position in the Neighborhood Safety Department of Deputy Director of Neighborhood Safety. Item number two are appointed positions in the Neighborhood Safety Department Associate Directors of Neighborhood Safety. And item number three is the appointed position in the Office of City Clerk for the City Clerk position. With that, I will move approval of all items.
Vice President Shugtai has moved approval of the Budget Committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to say thank you to the City Clerk and congratulations. And thank you for your continued service, sir.
Seeing no further discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye on all except number two.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes in the report except for number two, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next is the Business Housing and Zoning Committee Report. For councilmembers, let me remind you about the email I sent yesterday about changes to our TNC ordinances, including the one that was in flight this cycle through this committee. Those items will be addressed under the Order of Unfinished Business, as noted on the agenda. Therefore, we won't have that item under the committee report. With that, we'll have the committee report presented by that committee's chair, councilmember Osman.
Thank you, President Payne. The Business Housing and Zoning Committee moves 20 items for approval. Item one, approving on-sale liquor with Sunday sales, no life entertainment license for Black Duck. Number two, approving on-sale liquor with Sunday sales, no life entertainment license for Le Burger. Item three is approving a permanent expansion of premises for Estancia Steakhouse. Item four is approving a permanent expansion of promiscuous sidewalk cafe license for Martina and Rosalia. Item five is approving 17 resolutions for Minneapolis Home Finance Round 4 private sales. Item seven, it's seven liquor license renewal. Item eight is approving on-sale pre-ory taproom with Sunday sales and limited entertainment, off-sale mat liquor license with business license operating condition for Poo Haven. Item nine is approving landscape analysis of safe outdoor space staff direction to the Legislative Department. Item 10 is amending the supplemental co-enforcement funding legislative directive. Item 11 is authorizing an ownership and opportunity fund loan for LJR Steels Company. Item 12 is authorizing an ownership and opportunity fund for loan for Greek Street Properties. Item 13 is approving an affordable housing trust fund for contingency pool loan for aggregate housing. Item 14 is approving an appropriation of demolition and site destruction for former Kmart building. Item 15 is authorizing some medal of the 2024 through 2027 Local Unified Plan for Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Program. Item 16 is authorizing opioid settlement fund grant to Turning Point for supportive housing facility. Item 17 is authorizing contract amendment with Minneapolis Public Housing Authority for the Stable Homes, Stable Schools Program. Item 18 is approving a land use application fee ordinance. Item 19 is approving revised guideline for Cultural District Art Fund Initiative. And item 20, approving revised guideline for the Fireprint storefront initiative. I'll move all items for approval. Thank you, Council President.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to speak briefly to item nine. My hope is that the authors, as they guide us through and they get information from front of the cities, they allow us to understand the impact on surrounding neighbors and the way sexual violence and addiction is addressed in these proposed camps. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
Council President Payne, I am excited to talk about item number 13, which is $300,000 in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund contingency pool loan to aggregate housing, which is located in Ward 9. They plan to close the remaining of the funding gap by July 1st and I want to thank our city staff for all their hard work on this project. And just for the public to know, the building will include 50 units of affordable supportive housing consisting of single-room occupancy, SROs, studios, and one-bedroom units. 25 units that will serve formerly homeless households filled by Hennepin County coordinate entry. An emergency shelter serving up to 54 individuals nightly with overflow space to house up to 100 individuals. And 17,000 square feet of common area space between the housing and sheltering components included small and large meeting rooms, common gathering spaces, common area dining room, multipurpose rooms, a health clinic, and property manager staff, and supportive service staff offices. This is a very good thing and just want to say thank you to our staff and very proud to be in favor of this.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I want to speak to item number 20, the Vibrant Storefronts Initiative. I'm proud to be collaborating with Arts and Cultural Affairs Department. Director Ben Johnson is doing a really fantastic job, expeditiously moving this work forward this year. The Vibrant Storefronts Initiative will conduct grassroots partnerships between artists and property owners in Loring Park this year, specifically along Harmon Place, and with success can extend to more areas of the city. Loring Park is my neighborhood and has a long history of active and diverse creativity for artists to live and work. It is the cultural gateway to the city from the Sculpture Garden and the Walker to the Theater District in downtown. And so this initiative is a tangible solution for artists who need and deserve somewhere affordable to develop their craft and it also helps property owners with their vacancies. And so it's a major solution for downtown revitalization, which, as you know, property values downtown deeply implicate our city budget. So this is a proactive solution to that problem. It's a win-win and I'm thankful to Arts and Cultural Affairs for working so hard on this work.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I put myself in queue to echo Councilmember Cashman's comments around item number 20 and also item number 19, which supports our cultural districts and artists within those cultural districts. Looking forward to seeing the outcomes and results from these initiatives and want to thank Director Johnson and Arts and Culture Department for their extraordinary work.
Councilmember Osman.
Yes, same comments. I want to thank Director Ben Johnson and his staff for really working with us and this item on BS Committee, the Pub of Culture and the program. It's amazing. I would encourage those members that are not part of the BS Committee, should check out the presentation and the staff presentation they have provided on LIMPS and really super excited with item 19 and 20. Thank you.
I put myself in queue to highlight Black Duck. This is a restaurant that had a very rocky start. The owner, Jason Sawicki, bought the building right at the peak of the pandemic with the hopes of opening up a restaurant. Obviously, things didn't work out that well for him in 2020, but he was resilient and he got himself actually an old RV and started a food truck in that space, which became fair game. He got caught up in some of the food truck enforcement that the city had to do over the last couple of years and it's just really exciting to see his brick and mortar coming to fruition and so really looking forward to adding that to our Johnson Street commercial corridor. And it's a reflection of the future of, we want more commercial activities in more corners of our city so that we're not so dependent on downtown as the only source of some of our economic activities. So I'm really excited about that. Vice President Shugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to quickly speak to item number 11, which is some resources from the Ownership and Opportunity Fund coming to Ward 10 on 29th and Lyndale. I'm really excited to see these resources and investment in local entrepreneurship and ownership in the community I represent and also wanted to take a moment to then thank councilmember Ellison for his diligent work on the establishment of and investment in the Ownership and Opportunity Fund, including in our last budget cycle, when he brought forward an amendment to increase the amount of resources, making it possible for projects like this to be resourced and funded. It's creative solutions like this that help build wealth and economic vitality in our communities. Thank you.
Councilmember Vitak.
I'm, Vitak happened in queue for me, so thank you, Councilmember Vitak, for that. I wanted to just speak briefly on item number five. Also, thank you, Council Vice President, for the kind words and really it is about our staff and I want to talk to our staff a little bit when it comes to item number five. I think that we have become so reliant on our staff to produce good housing outcomes for us that sometimes we take it for granted. But I just, you know, we're here in this round for property sales and I can't remember the exact number of units that are represented here, but I cannot speak highly enough about the work that our staff do to make sure that we have housing across the continuum here in the city of Minneapolis. And, you know, if we had less talented staff, if we had less money going towards this, we would feel that impact, I think, pretty acutely as a city. And so just wanted to, we got a presentation on this and, you know, when it comes to the diversity of bringing in new developers, when it comes to closing the homeownership gap, you know, this is one of the programs and our staff are some of the people in our city. city that are really doing a lot of heavy lifting, to the extent that we're making an impact there. So just wanted to, didn't want to let that go without being highlighted. And again, thank you to, you know, Alfred Port and Roxanne Kimball and the whole team, you know, over there in CPED. So just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next is the Climate and Infrastructure Committee Report presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward eleven items. Number one is approving and authorizing an assessment for the Whittier North Residential Resurfacing Project. Item two is approving appointments to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Item three is approving appointments to the Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Item four is authorizing Highway Safety Improvement Program Traffic Signals and Pedestrian Improvements Project to improve safety at twelve intersections. Item five is authorizing Public Works to enter an agreement with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to host a Green Corps member. Item six is authorizing an agreement with the Met Council Environmental Services for the Second Street North Sanitary Improvement Project and the First Avenue South Paving Project. Item seven is authorizing a master funding agreement with the Met Council regarding transit advantage projects on city-owned streets. Item eight is authorizing a partnership agreement with the Met Council to administer the Transit Assistance Program through the Minneapolis Service Center. Item nine is approving appointments to the Community Environmental Advisory Commission, otherwise known as the CAC. And item ten is authorizing the submittal of an application for the Federal Department of Energy Communities sparking investment in transformative energy for a residential energy efficiency program. And lastly, item eleven is the passage of a resolution declaring the week of May nineteenth, 2024, as Public Works Week, and I'll move approval of these items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Council President Payne. I want to talk about item number eight, which is an agreement with the Metropolitan Council for the Transit Assistance Program. Council President, this is something that me and you worked on in our first term with our city staff, like the 301 Services Director, Mwende, Suzanne from the mayor's office, and it's just good to see this get through. This program is designed to make public transit more affordable for people with lower incomes by providing a year-long reduced fare pass on a go-to card. Customers can ride the bus or train for just $1. By participating in the TAP partnership, the city of Minneapolis will make public transit more affordable for people with lower incomes by directly distributing these TAP cards right here in downtown at the Minneapolis Service Center. And it's just good to see this get done with the collaboration and that we were able to work with our city staff.
Thank you for those comments. It is very cool to see something that we started come to conclusion with that help. Councilmember Cashman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge the new members of the Bicycle Advisory Committee, Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and the and the Community Environmental Advisory Commission. Ward Seven residents applied in very large numbers for these positions, so I'm really grateful for their engagement with these committees, and I'm really excited to work with Cliff Mountjoy Venning on the back, and Amy Nash and Eric Smith on the pack, and Gladys Mejia on the CAC. And I also want to acknowledge the Public Works staff. This is Public Works Employee Week, and we did our resolution in committee and had dozens of Public Works employees there, some who have worked at the city for forty-seven years and others who are new trainees who are on their first months on the job. So it was really special to celebrate with them in committee last week, and I thank them for their service.
Thank you for highlighting those staff. Seeing no one else in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The Committee of the Hull is the next report, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez. Before he presents that report, let me share that there was a clerical error on one of the items that was brought to our attention late yesterday. This is for the contract with Axion for MPD Policy Management Software. There was a clerical error in both the contract rate and term, and those will be corrected with an updated RCA for the record, and we will have an updated motion that reflects the correct value in term of the contract as it has been finalized for our consideration. You should have that corrected motion in front of you. And with that, Councilmember Chavez will present the committee's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Hull is bringing forward three items. Item number one is the passage of a resolution calling on the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to designate Ecuador for temporary protected status. Item number two is a contract with Oxycon for MPD Policy Management Software. And item number three is a contract with Benchmark Holdco for services related to providing MPD with an early intervention system. Mr. President, I will move items one through two, one and three for approval. I would recommend we move item number two for discussion, given that there is an amendment and an opportunity for councilmembers to ask more questions based on what you said.
Councilmember Chavez has moved items one and three for approval, and we will pull item two for discussion. Are there any, is there any discussion on item one and three? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries, and those items have been approved. Next, we will take up item number two. As I stated, the motion should be in front of you. It's changing the contract term and and amount, adjusting it from two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred to two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-fifty for a three-year term instead of a five-year term. I did ask staff to be available for any questions. So are there any questions or discussion on on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah?[1081.63]
Discussion. Not seeing any. Oh, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted, I'm very excited to vote in favor of Michelle Phillips. I want, I'm excited to work with her in the Civil Rights Department. It's a role that has been vacant for a little bit. I know that we had our COO taking that role, but it's just really good to have it filled. I'm really excited for the leadership of Michelle Phillips and what she's going to do here for the city of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I... All right. Thank you, Chair Payne. So, I just wanted to echo that congratulations and excitement to approve Michelle Phillips and welcome her to our city. It is a big effort to move all the way from Oakland to Minneapolis, Minnesota. I'm also share in the excitement of having a director for our Civil Rights Department. I particularly am looking forward to... Okay. I am particularly looking forward to working with Director on efforts around enforcing our wage theft ordinance and then a potential Labor Standards Board. I know that there's been discussion among this body about that. And I just thank the Civil Rights Department staff who have really stepped up as there have been changes within the department and just being nimble. It's really our staff who make the work happen, and so I'm looking forward to seeing her leadership in the city of Minneapolis.
Thank you for those comments and seeing no one else in queue. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Kosky.
Aye.
Wonsley.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Chowdhury.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Rainville.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Vita.
Aye.
Vice President Chuckteig.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Thank you, colleagues. That completes the reports of all of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions, and there is one notice today. Councilmember Wonsley and Ellison give notice that they will introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance to amend provisions related to the payment of tenant relocation assistance in the city's housing maintenance code. Is there any question on that notice? Councilmember Wonsley?
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just wanted to give some context to this NOI a bit. So, as many of you recall, we had a long report completed by our Policy and Research Division on eviction prevention and anti-displacement policies around the country. In this report, it includes a comparison of Minneapolis tenant relocation assistance in cities like Portland and Seattle. The key difference between our program is that Minneapolis has a very narrow scope and does not provide support for displacement due to economic factors. So, options in the report included expanding additional triggers that would make renters eligible for relocation assistance, and I am eager to explore what that expansion could look like to ensure that we do have policies that protect renters who are still facing huge rent increases in our city because of lack of protections. I would like to thank the Policy and Research Division for their thorough work on this report, which I intend to use as a guiding blueprint for the legislative development of this policy alongside my co-author, Councilmember Ellison.
Is there any other discussion? That notice is hereby given and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. First, Councilmembers Chavez and Chowdhury move to introduce and give first reading to an ordinance amending the food code to establish and amend provisions for sidewalk cart and street vending program to be referred to the Public Health and Safety Committee. Second, Councilmember Chavez moves to introduce and give first reading to an ordinance amending the Housing Maintenance Code to establish provisions for proactive and annual rental inspections for the enforcement of housing maintenance codes to be referred to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee. Third, Councilmember Chavez moves to amend prior notice language and to introduce and give first reading to an ordinance amending the Civil Rights Code to amend provisions to add new protected classes, bolster enforcement of current protections, and amend procedures for efficiency and ease of use, which is also referred to the Business Public, oh, to the Public Health and Safety Committee. Is there any discussion on those items? Councilmember Wonsley, is that you still in queue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President Payne. This is in regards to item number three, the Civil Rights Ordinance. I just wanted to ask Councilmember Chavez if he will be amendable to add me as a co-author. You and I have had some conversations about our mutual desire to align our codes around protected classes to the realities of our communities and really look forward to working with you more on the development of this ordinance along with our appropriate staff in civil rights.
I'm seeing head nods. Is there any other discussion? Not seeing any. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vita.
Aye.
Vice President Chuckteig.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those matters will be referred to those committees in the next cycle. Next is the order of resolutions. There are six honorary resolutions listed on the agenda. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers on any of those resolutions? May I have a motion to adopt all six of those honorary resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Kosky.
Aye.
Wonsley.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Chowdhury.
Aye.
Cashman.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Rainville.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Vita.
Aye.
Vice President Chuckteig.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those resolutions are adopted. Next, we will take up our unfinished business, item one, which is a report on the supplemental petition for a proposed charter amendment to create a civilian police accountability commission. I'll invite the city clerk to provide the report on the supplemental petition.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to all of the city council. My name is Casey Carl. I have the pleasure of serving as the city clerk. With me is John Martin, our Deputy Director of the Elections and Voter Services Division. I'll quickly summarize this issue. You know that we received a citizen's petition to amend the city charter as a ballot question be referred to voters in November's general election this year. A coalition of community-based accountability organizations had submitted that proposal to our Charter Commission on Wednesday, May 1st, as required by state law. If approved by voters, this amendment would create an elected commission that would have direction, control, and oversight of the Minneapolis Police Department. By law, a petition must have the signatures of qualified voters totaling at least 5% of the total number of ballots that were cast in the last previous statewide general election. So, that would have been the 2022 gubernatorial election, and it means, based on the number of ballots cast in that election in Minneapolis, that a petition to be valid would need to have at least a minimum of 8,943 valid voter signatures to be deemed sufficient by statute. The statutory deadline to submit a ballot question proposed by a citizen petition is July 9th of this year. As reported at your last regular meeting on May 9, our first evaluation of the original petition found that it was insufficient. As this slide shows, they needed an additional 3,498 signatures to have that signature, the petition be deemed valid. A total of 5,445 signatures were valid of the total numbers that were submitted. Under the statutes, the petition committee has 10 days to cure the petition, meaning to either correct the invalid signatures or to get additional valid signatures to hit at least that minimum number required for the threshold. So, Mr. Martin then has been leading the processing team these last five days to review the supplemental or amended petition that was turned into our office, and he has the report for you on that petition.
Excellent. Thank you, Clerk Carl, President Payne, councilmembers. So, after reviewing the supplemental pages, the clerk's office still finds that the CPAC petition is deficient and has not achieved the number of valid signatures, which is 8,943. On the screen is the details of our supplemental analysis. So, on May 20th, the CPAC committee delivered to us an additional 305 pages or 3,050 possible additional signature lines. After reviewing those additional pages and those lines, we found that they had an additional 1,511 valid signatures. The remaining lines were deemed invalid for a number of reasons. The assessment of the, of all of those lines are on the screen. It should be noted that unlike the original petition, there was no issues with the pages regarding issues regarding the affidavit, and all of the pages were uniform in nature. So, no pages were disqualified for affidavit or uniformity issues. The 1,511 valid signatures lines equated to roughly 49.5% of the entire supplemental petition was, had a success rate of that rate. If you omit all of the blank lines that were submitted, they had a success rate of 56.5% on their supplemental petition. That's a higher success rate than they had on the original petition, which had a success rate of 42 and 43%, respectively. This is partly because the original petition had signatures dating all the way back from 2021, so covered roughly three and a half years of signatures, the signatures that they gathered in the supplemental petition. There was some which were gathered in 2023, but most of them were gathered in 2024, and we find that the more recent, the signature, the most likely, it's going to be valid because people do move around in the city. The, this slide is just a breakdown of the percentages of our various assessment codes for the supplemental petition. So, in addition to the 1,511 valid signatures, we found that 545, or roughly 17.9%, of the signatures submitted could not be found in the Minneapolis registered voter list that we were using. 377, or 12.4% of the lines were blank that they submitted. 187, or 6.1%, were people who either signed the supplemental petition twice, or people who signed both the supplemental petition and the original petition, and those were counted as duplicates. And lastly, 180 of the lines, or 5.9%, were folks who signed with the information that they put on the petition did not match in some way, shape, or form to what was in the registered voter list. So, with that, the CPAC group with the additional 1,511 signatures that they gathered, the original petition had 5,445 valid signatures. So, in total, with both the original and the supplemental petition, the CPAC committee gathered 6,956 valid signatures to be deemed sufficient. As Clerk Carl mentioned, the needed number is 8,943. So, they fell short of that threshold by 1,987 valid signatures. Because of that, the petition is still deemed deficient. The table on the screen shows the, all of the assessment codes for both the original petition, the supplemental petition, and then a sum of both, and then the percentage breakdown. Overall, they had a 43% success rate. The biggest deficiency was we just couldn't find them in the voter registration database, and that accounted for about 21% of our signatures, and roughly 9% of the signatures were disqualified because of some of the pages were not uniform, and then some had missing affidavit information. The full report will be given to both the CPAC committee and will be available on LIMs, and I will turn this back to Clerk Carl, and we will stand for questions at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and I'll just close out by saying what the next steps will be. Mr. President, as I indicated at the first presentation, because the petition has been deemed insufficient under the law, no further action will be taken on the petition this year. However, to point out that a finding of an insufficient petition does not prejudice the filing of a new petition on the same purpose in a future election year. So, as Mr. Martin indicated, we will provide a full copy of that complete analysis on both the original and the supplemental petition to the committee for their information. We won't take any further action on the proposal this year since it fails to qualify under state law as a valid petition, but want to express our appreciation to the committee for their work to gather those signatures over a number of years and to bring that forward through the Charter Commission to this body. Happy to stand for questions if there are any.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions? Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. Mr. Clerk, I just had one question. If the petitioners were to bring the same petition back, would, in our process, I'm just trying to understand process, would it, would they have to start completely over with a new set of signatures dated? How does that work?
Through the President, I'll say, Commissioner Chowdhury, it's a good question. This petition is deemed insufficient, so this entire petition is, fails to move forward. If they want to bring a new petition forward, they would start all over again, and the threshold would be based on the total number of ballots that are cast in this year's presidential election. So, every even-numbered-year election in the general election year in November sets the threshold for the next two-year period, and so that number changes every year, and every single year in early January or February, the Charter Commission puts together a timeline for citizen petitions in terms of the deadlines to submit them and the signatures required to make a sufficient petition. So, yes, the same committee or another committee could bring this exact same proposal forward, but the process would begin again. They'd have to start gathering signatures again, and the threshold for valid signatures would likely be different.
Thank you. I'll conclude my comments by extending my gratitude for residents for going through the civic process. It's not easy, and bringing it forward, and extend my gratitude to our Election Voter Services staff who worked very nimbly to collect those, or count those signatures initially, and then worked again hard to count the supplemental signatures. I know you were working into yesterday, so thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury, and I echo that gratitude. Is there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will direct the clerk to receive and file that report, and as the clerk indicated, there is no action to be taken on this petition. The second item under the order of unfinished business pertains to this body's actions related to transportation network companies, and specifically rideshare pay rates, monitoring, and enforcement, and other associated issues. These prior actions are listed on the agenda for reference. As we know, and as widely covered in the news media, the state legislator, legislature acted in its final hours to preempt the city council to enact a statewide law setting minimum rates of compensation for TNC drivers. That's good news, and we're proud of our work to advance that issue and to address the need to provide fair wages for our drivers. Nevertheless, the preemption by the state voids our original ordinance, which was enacted over the mayor's veto, and also makes void the further associated actions which are currently in our local legislative process for consideration. So, as shown on the agenda, I am proposing that we recall ordinance number 2024-009, as well as the three associated actions, and return all those items to the authors. I'll point out that under Council Rule 8.7, this is the proper motion for giving final disposition to an ordinance that is neither approved nor denied. Instead, this action merely voids all of those actions and closes the files and limbs. After consulting with the city clerk, I understand it is his intention to annotate those files with a reference to the state action that preempts the city for future research and historical purposes. So, as shown on the agenda, all of these actions are under LIMs File Number 2024-00146. We would be closing that file, annotating with a reference to the state's action, and those matters would be removed from our agenda. I want to thank the authors for their work and to bring these proposals forward. Clearly, our local efforts resulted in workplace improvements for the entire state, and I think we should be justly proud of that outcome. Are there any questions about the proposed actions? Seeing none, I'll move to return all actions listed on the agenda associated with LIMs File Number 2024-00146 to the authors. May I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Council President Payne, I will, or ask the clerks to, is there space to just have a couple of points this year on this, or should we take the vote first?
We, the floor is open for discussion.
Okay. Awesome. I just want to offer a couple of points on this, because it's also a celebratory day, I think, for a number of us. I think all of us are aware, you know, in the fall of 2022, we had hundreds of drivers, thanks to the efforts of Councilmember Osmond, for being their direct champion here. We had hundreds of drivers come to City Hall repeatedly to tell us about the poverty wages that they were earning, and also the exploit of workplace conditions that they were being subjected to by Uber and Lyft, as also the DLI study highlights, where, became very aware that many of these workers were Black, Brown, and immigrant who were struggling to pay rent and support their families. And Councilmember Osmond, alongside those drivers, asked us as councilmembers to stand with those drivers in their fight for minimum wages and basic worker rights protections that thousands of other workers in Minneapolis have because of ordinance actions that this body have taken. And I'm proud to say, 18 months later, we are celebrating the fruits of that labor alongside our state leaders because we worked together to the, to deliver drivers a statewide policy that gives them nearly a 20% raise and some of the strongest worker protections in the country. And this victory was only made possible because drivers and their socialist and progressive allies on council and in the state were not deterred by corporate lobbyists and repeated vetoes, both by Governor Walz and Mayor Frye. We persevered and passed a strong ordinance this March that set the terms for the state policy that we are celebrating and have been celebrating since its passage on Sunday. And throughout this policy fight, Uber and Lyft have used the same bullying and scare tactics that have allowed them to block worker protections in cities and states across the country. And it's these to-profit, hungry tech companies, they've been successfully able to pressure many elected officials to allow them to continue their exploitive labor practices. And here in Minnesota, some councilmembers, legislators, and executive leaders were pressured into prioritizing Uber and Lyft's profits over the minimum wage needs of our majority Black and immigrant rideshare driver workforce. An example of this was Governor Walz's decision to champion Uber and Lyft's demands for preemption. And I think it's widely known amongst the labor movement that preemption is inherently anti-worker and will be weaponized to dissuade unions, community organizations, as well as other cities, from champion crucial worker protections at the local level like we did here in Minneapolis. And it's Governor Walz's decision to side with corporations over workers that will leave a lone-standing scar on his legacy when it comes to workers' rights. And while some elected officials caved, again, I just want to extend gratitude for our majority of us that stood strong with the workers and working-class residents who actually make the city run and the state run. And because of you all holding strong and not succumbing to corporate pressure or bullying, drivers won the statewide victory. And it's the Minneapolis ordinance and its reverberating impacts that represents a crucial threat to all corporations who think they are above the law and who are used to being able to bully elected officials into basically letting them do whatever and especially exploit workers. So, the Minnesota drivers' victory is part of a history of working-class people of color refusing to settle for the unjust that is quo. In this case, it was around our rideshare industry. And I think all of us know, because it's been a two-year fight, this was not one that was easy to win, but it does demonstrate that when we do take on corporate interests for the sake of protecting working-class residents, those fights are not deemed, they're not impossible. And drivers won despite corporate money and corporate pressure, and I hope that other cities and workers from across the country can take note of the local victory here and be encouraged to continue this growing fight and movement to challenge exploitive companies like Uber, Lyft, in order to deliver the necessary protections and fair wages to their respective rideshare drivers. Especially my hometown, Chicago, they are up next. I know they had a press conference yesterday discussing their efforts to lead legislative changes for regulations around rideshare, and I wish you will. Know that you have champions here on the council, also at the state level, who are willing to support you every step of the way. So, I just want to say thank you again to my colleagues. Thank you to my co-authors. Could not have done or gotten this far without you, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Osmond, Councilmember Chowdhury, and Councilmember Chuckteig. We spent one too many hours at the Capitol getting this agreement through the, across the finish line, and I thank you for the moments of cheering all of us on. Councilmember Chowdhury, thank you for recognizing the moments when we were drained and turning on Kendrick Lamar, not like us, to give us the spirit to continue forward and recognizing what was needed in that moment to champion the needs of drivers, despite the pushback of Uber and Lyft and actually the governor at times. So, I am so thankful for my colleagues. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Wonsley. Councilmember, sorry, Vice President Chuckteig.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've discussed this issue several times at the stais, so I'm not going to speak to the substance of it as I have before, but just wanted to take some time to thank the number of colleagues who have worked on different pieces of this over the last couple of years and especially over the last few months in the work I've seen you do through partners in public, in, through your newsletters. You know, of course, starting with Councilmember Wonsley, the author, the lead author of this, of this work at City Hall, you, you are, you are so persistent and so diligent, and, and you do not give up. And I am so grateful to serve with you. Thank you for all of your work in, in bringing us along in the process and always, always, always prioritizing the people we're doing this for, the 10,000 workers, Minnesotans, whose lives are going to change for the better as a result of all of that work. Thank you. And then, of course, Councilmember Osmond and Councilmember Chavez, for your leadership on this. Councilmember Chowdhury, our new incoming council member who took on being our IGR chair and, and really put in the work at the Capitol and brought all of us along and, and you know, kept us on the phones and kept us talking to our legislative partners and making sure that, that we stood strong and got the best possible result at the state and held our partners accountable to doing that, too. That would not have happened without you. To councilmembers Cashman and Kosky in your work with our, with partners in the, in the tourism industry, in the, in the downtown business community, in finding creative solutions. When Uber and Lyft were ready to abandon our communities, you were linking arms with the people who make Minneapolis and its economy work to figure out how we creatively build our, our new, this new economy without, without those two multi-billion-dollar corporations. And, and of course, our council president for, for leading us through this work. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Mr. Chair, I'm grateful that work at the state legislature and pressure from Governor Walz has resulted in a compromise that will result in Uber and Lyft able to continue operations in Minneapolis and across our state. I should also start by saying I'm pleased that my colleagues are good with this end result. I'm glad to see your tears of happiness today. I truly am. I think this is a very good result, though the process to get here was quite the wild ride. On March 14, 10 of my colleagues chose to disregard the recommendations from the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industries Wage Study and instead passed rates based on one week of data from Seattle, Washington. Despite warnings from drivers, riders, and TNC companies, my colleagues proceeded hastily and recklessly, I think, to pass these rates that we have in front of us today. The Dolly Study was minimum wage and then some, and the truth of that really matters here. My colleagues ignored the concerns of their constituents. My colleagues ignored the concerns of their constituents who rely on these services, most as riders, some as drivers. For many of these people, the absence of Uber and Lyft was not simply the absence of a convenient ride home after a night out, it was the absence of a sole source of income or the ride they relied on to get to work, medical care, the grocery store, or school. So when I hear my colleagues claim victory, I need to call their bluff. This ordinance resulted in thousands of contacts from devastated, anxious residents, many of them low-income or seniors or individuals with disabilities. It consumed so much of the time at the legislature that the session ended without a bonding bill, and that comes at a cost to all Minnesotans. And for Minneapolis, it means no funding needs throughout our city, like the Nicolet Avenue Bridge, like Roof Depot Compensation, like things that have been very important and are written down as part of our legislative agenda. And it required the state legislature to intervene and save the city from the consequences of its own ordinance. Preemption is the price we're paying for poor policymaking by this body. The statewide rates result in a 14% raise for drivers that is identical to the raise they would have received with Mayor Frye's proposal from months ago. I'm not sure I need to remind my colleagues that the pay level adopted was far closer to the mayor's proposal than what the council enacted. We could have come to a compromise on this, we could have avoided preemption, and we could have ended the session with a bonding bill, perhaps. But sadly, throughout this whole process, it seemed like many of my colleagues were more focused on other things than sound policymaking. So I hope this has been a learning opportunity for my colleagues. None of us were elected to this body with a mandate. None of us were elected for anything about fulfilling the goals of a particular political party or an agenda. We were elected to represent residents and listen to every voice, not just the loudest ones. And those are my thoughts as we proceed. Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Osmond, you're in queue twice, but I understand one of those is for Councilmember Ellison.
Yes, Ellison will be the next one, but I'm not gonna get into it. This is done deal, this is victory. I do want to take the time to really thank Councilmember Wonsley. You have stood up, you have shown leadership, and you put an example of working together and fighting for drivers. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership. And Councilmember Ellison is next.
Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I was gonna, I was gonna hold off from making comments, but I do think it's important for the public to understand sometimes the way that policymaking gets made is through the due diligence of information. Sometimes good policymaking happens because of pressure, and I think that that's a part of what happened here. I want to remind folks that when this policy came up, was it a year ago, a year-plus ago? We were told then that the state was gonna take action, right? The authors were told then that the state was gonna take action. That cannot be an invisible part or a minimal part of the story here. It is probably the most critical part that set the next year into motion. Councilmembers took a step back, the authors took a step back, and I want to remind folks, I was not one of the authors, right? I was sort of trying to have, not have too much of a dog in this fight. I do believe in fair pay and pay equity, but I wasn't one of the authors. But the authors took a step back and allowed the state to do their process. When the pressure was off, the state did not act. And that's not a knock at the state, and there's a lot of players there, I know it's a complex issue, but when, but when the pressure was off, the state did not act. And so the authors began their work again. And I believe that at several points in this process, had the council not proceeded, the state wouldn't have proceeded. That's what history tells me, right? We can't know that for sure, but that is what history tells me. I think the evidence is there overwhelmingly. The pressure that our actions took resulted in statewide policy. And so I think that when folks are, when councilmembers are declaring victory over this policy, sure, it's not the victory of the ordinance they authored, but I do think that it's appropriate to say, we had to apply a tremendous amount of pressure in order to maintain a victory for workers that, you know, that goes beyond Minneapolis. And so, you know, is that, is that sort of the kind of municipal policymaking that I prefer, that I know a lot of us prefer? No, that's politics. But there is a part of our job that isn't just ordinance drafting. There's a part of this job that is, that is, that is about pressure, that is about making sure that your strategy results in the best possible outcome. And so what occurred here was that the strategy that the authors engaged in, that I'll agree, took up more time than I wanted it to, right? But the strategy that the authors engaged in proved to be the strategy necessary in order to get this passed and in order for this thing to take shape in the way that it needed to. And so kudos to the folks, to the state legislators who did champion this work and did push it forward, but I think that it is well-appropriate for the authors to look at the result that we're seeing from the state and understand acutely the role that they played in the outcome. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wonsley.
First, thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Osmond and Councilmember Ellison, for raising a couple of things. I did want to provide clarity on some of the points that Councilmember Pomisono raised in terms of, I keep hearing this very inaccurate framing of our policy efforts here that we rushed and that it was done in a hasty way, a rushed way, without any consideration. And for a number of co-authors who are of color and who have earned election certificates just like anyone else, I really want to push back on some of the problematic undertones of that, especially when it's public knowledge that we've spent 18 months on developing this policy. And it started with initiating conversations with the mayor's administration that provided the very first and original compensation proposal that they developed in consultation with other national experts from across the country. So one right there, 18 months of our due diligence in developing a legislative framework to drive this policy forward that was repeatedly analyzed by our own efforts. We asked the policy and research team to analyze it, we asked other national consultants to analyze it, we welcomed the additional analysis that came from the state. So the idea that we went into this ignorant and just did not care is just simply not true. Second, this idea that this body was responsible for the lack of execution on the bonding bill is also ridiculous. We entered into conversations months ago with our state leaders, as many of you asked us, especially Councilmember Pomisono. You said, wait, 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 as Councilmember Ellison highlighted, wait on the state, talk to the state, and that's exactly what we did. And we informed all of you all in regular email updates about those conversations with the state, where the goal was to come to our agreement, because our goal has always been, yes, we want a minimum wage and protection-based policy for drivers here in Minneapolis, but we also want that for 10,000 drivers across the state. And that's exactly what we did. We entered in conversations a month ago and then reached an agreement that we had intended to pass today with the $1.27 per mile and 51 cents per minute. Unfortunately, conversations over the weekend took a different turn when Uber and Lyft up the pressure on Walz, and we had to go back to the negotiations table. And I thank my councilmembers Chowdhury and Council Vice President Chuck Tai for actually being there in the space to get us to a place of agreement. Also, state leaders know how to do their job. They know they had ample opportunities to pass a bonding bill prior to the end of session, and, you know, that is something that they had to deal with, along with disruptions from Republicans, which everyone saw over this weekend. So again, the idea that we basically halted the delivery of a bonding bill, yeah, please miss me with that. And then lastly, the piece around, we did not take up Mayor Frye's proposal. Every proposal that Mayor Frye gave to the co-authors formally through his administration, which was through the $1.40 per mile and 51 cent per minute, also the $1.17 and 34 cent per minute policy, those were all directly communicated to the co-authors in this body. And we seriously considered them, we did analysis that you all were here to receive input on and to also review. It is unfortunate that those policies, per the research, demonstrated that that would have given drivers sub-minimum earnings and would not allow them to take a minimum wage home that also included the cost of doing business here in Minneapolis. So Mayor Frye's administration, and he was directly engaged throughout this process, unfortunately, his proposals just weren't, weren't going to be what was needed to get us a strong policy at the state. In fact, I will say, if we listened to Mayor Frye's sub-hard proposals at the local level, we would not have won the statewide policy that we got right now. So I want to disrupt and push back on that piece, too. Mayor Frye's proposal was heavily considered in our deliberations around this policy. Also, I want to push back on this idea that we took up too much time. There is a number of bills here that people have been asking for rent control for several years now and ain't got it. So the idea that this took up too much time, the 2040 Plan also needed state assistance to get through the finish line, that didn't take up too much time, we were willing to deliver on that. So I just want to highlight a couple of pieces here.
Speaking of time, Councilmember, your time has expired.
And I'm done right now, and I'll conclude.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I was just going to take a moment to thank Majority Leader Long, Majority Leader Aaron Murphy, Senator Fatae, Representative Hassan for their work and partnership at the legislature. Thank our Queer Caucus and our Posse Caucus for calling us in to come to the table, the efforts of our drivers, and I really wanted to thank our intergovernmental relations team, our director, Katie Topinka, and Steve Huser, who provided really great counsel and advice throughout this process through the legislative session. I was really glad to see that we were able to, one, when we did the extension, do what we set out to do, which is collaborate with state leaders, create opportunities for new ride-share companies to be licensed and expand the market, and also for us to deliver the strongest legislation in the nation on this. There were some really, really great things done this legislative session. And I'll just give a quote from Majority Leader Long, the night that the legislature, the governor, and everyone came together on an agreement. "I give tremendous credit to the city council. We didn't get a bill passed last year. The city council did. They stepped up, they stood up for drivers, they forced the issue at the state Capitol. They made sure we were going to be responding no matter what. They set a high bar for what we want to talk about for wages for drivers, and they made sure that we were standing strong. They forced the conversation here and made sure we had the strongest deal possible for drivers." And that's what I want to root us in today. We have people who are living at or below the poverty wage, that are relying on public assistance, that immigrated to this country for a better life, a story that I know really, really well, and I know many colleagues up here when we're thinking about our parents or ourselves. So truly a gratitude to the drivers who have been pushing and pushing and showing up day in and day out, and I am just proud that they'll be getting a 20% increase, and they're not going to need to go another, another year without that increase, and I am just excited to see the ripple effect that this will have, right? In Massachusetts, they're looking at path to unionization, Chicago is taking on this work, there's interest in the city of Denver, and these conversations are ongoing, and this is the best of the city of Minneapolis, when the city and state can work together, whether it's $15 minimum wage, paid family medical leave, and now ride share, because this is an issue that impacts the workers in our city. This is an issue that does impact our constituents. This is the business of the city of Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota, and today is a day for us to be proud. It was a Uber-Lift to get this done, to add some levity, to add some levity, because I think we all need to laugh a little bit. And this is, and I'm excited for this to be something that we move forward on, and I just, I thank my colleagues. I'm glad that we could work together as a team and move this forward. There might be differences here, but what we're looking ahead at in next year in December is an amazing policy that will be enacted statewide for all cities in the city of Minneapolis or city of, state of Minnesota. There we go.
Thank you for those comments. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisono.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and those ordinances have been returned to author. We'll now take up the item of new business that was introduced by Councilmember Rainville as an amendment to the agenda. Councilmember Rainville, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So what you have before you is a large block business district permit submitted by the Minnesota Timberwolves, which will cover their playoff run through this round and the next round on the original People-centric Street in Minneapolis, First Avenue North. And I would like to thank several staff people who have made this possible, Shane Morton from Traffic, Lieutenant Mona from Minneapolis Police Department, and the great members of the Ward III Office, Henry and Patrick. I also appreciate all the hard work that the Timberwolves put in this as well with Ethan Kason and Ryan Tannen. So with that, I would encourage all of you to vote for this and continue the re-energizing of downtown Minneapolis.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion to approve this temporary permit?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley is absent. Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisono.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and that permit is adopted. Colleagues, we have a request for a closed session today, so before we recess for that closed session, I'll ask if there are any announcements. Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I just wanted to quickly acknowledge Mena Patel, who is visiting the Ward IV office from Malaysia. She, oh, there she is, she's in the back. Mena is here with the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative. She's been with the Ward IV office for about a month now. She's become a Timberwolves fan, she loves the city of Minneapolis, she's been getting around quite well, enjoying our city, she's taken walks on the river, she's helped out with projects in Ward IV. She's gonna be leaving this weekend, I think Monday, and so the office will miss her. We've become family in this short period of time, but I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Mena Patel and her friends and colleagues from all over Southeast Asia. I think we have five YSLI members here visiting Minneapolis, and we were just so lucky to have Mena in the Ward IV office. Mena works with youth in Malaysia, and also she works in politics. So thank you for your service, Mena, in Malaysia, and also thanks for being family to us in Minneapolis.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the commemoration of the murder of George Floyd, which will be coming up this weekend, May 25th. There will be a Rise and Remember Commemoration Event at George Floyd Square this weekend, full day of activities, as well as a candlelight vigil on Saturday evening. This was a traumatic event in the city of Minneapolis that reverberated all around the nation and subsequently the world. It has sparked tremendous change in the city of Minneapolis and, I think, policing around the country. And, yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge. And yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that tragic event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to share out a big, another big legislative victory that really impacts the city of Minneapolis. I know it was mentioned by our mayor in a previous council meeting, but I wanted to mention it here in our council meeting following the legislative session. The Com Plan Clarity Bill passed, which means 2040 in the city of Minneapolis, our comprehensive plan, lives and continues, which is really great for housing production. There's empty school buildings that now have an opportunity for conversion for other uses. MPHA is able to continue moving forward on project ideas that they have. I just thank all of the community members, coalition partners that were a part of this effort, the administration, Councilmember Cashman for testifying at the Capitol on this council's behalf, and again, our tremendous IGR team, Director Topinka, Steve Huzer, Indira Filana, Lauren Olson, they all spent so much time making this a number-one priority and really, really up until the time of the vote, making sure that senators and representatives were ready to support this really important and impactful bill. And I thank our city staff as well, and CPED, Meg McCannon in particular, who gave me a really good rundown of the impacts of this bill not moving forward or moving forward, and their efforts also in testifying at the state Capitol. This was a really big and tremendous effort that took place over two legislative sessions. So just wanted to put that good news, exciting news, out into our council meeting.
Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Council President. I want to share that there are public arts events and public arts events that's coming up next few weeks. One that's happening in my ward is dedication of public art at Samatara Crossing, great late honoring Hussein Samatara, our first Somali elected officials in United States. There will be a poet and dances, and so everyone is invited. It's right behind US Bank Stadium, Samatara Crossing, on Tuesday, May 28 at 5:00 p.m.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. I just want to emphasize again that this is Public Works Week, and this morning I had the pleasure of addressing the 6:00 a.m. crew and the 6:30 a.m. crew who pick up our solid waste, our rubbish, our recyclables, our organics. They're very brave women and men. They're out there in the heat, the cold, as I said, up earlier than I care to get up, but they're doing a great job for the city, and it's very important to honor them and acknowledge them, and I wish to do that again. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we've completed all of the items on our agenda, and we'll now consider the request for a closed session, which is to be received, which is to receive a briefing on the litigation matter listed on the agenda. Before I move to close the meeting, I'll recognize the city attorney to provide the legal basis for the requested closed session.
Thank you, Council President Payne. The next item on the agenda is the case of Desmond Gilbert versus the City of Minneapolis et al. This is a case that your lawyers wish to discuss with the council with respect to litigation strategy and/or settlement possibilities. Accordingly, under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05, Subdivision 3B, the council may upon a proper motion close the meeting for the purposes of attorney-client communication as permitted by the attorney-client privilege, in considering the motion the council should weigh the right of the public to know what its government is doing against the need of the city to preserve the confidentiality of its discussions with its attorneys.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I move to close our public meeting as authorized under the open meeting law, specifically Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05, for the purpose of receiving a briefing on the litigation matter of Desmond Gilbert versus the City of Minneapolis. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley is absent. Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Vice President Shugta.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries. For the viewing public, I will note that the broadcast of this meeting will continue, and the council will reconvene in public after we've concluded our closed session. And for colleagues, I will suggest that we arrive in the closed session at 12:05 so that we have a little room to refresh.
The time is now 12:41 and the City Council has reconvened an open session following our closed session. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to prove the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Kosky.
Present.
Councilmember Wanfley is absent. Councilmember Jenkins is absent. Councilmember Pomisano.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins is present. Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman is absent. Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville is absent. Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vita.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are nine members present.
Let the record reflect, we have a quorum and with no further business to come before the council and without objection this meeting is adjourned and I hope everybody has a good holiday weekend.